Good evening, everyone. I have 6:32 and I'll call the meeting to order and call the roll. So Mr. Greg David?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Present.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Here.
Mr. John Welch?
Present.
Thank you. So first item or item three on the agenda is citizens concerned. Are there any citizens? I don't see any, but good opportunity. Okay, seeing none, move on to new business. So the first, so there are three items on this special city council meeting agenda already to terms and term limits. Item four A is term limits for city council members. So we want to discuss that or if you've had a chance to review it. You know everything I have to say about it, I think, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. David?
I must be the only one on the council that's reading it this way, but first of all, I think, I think I gave bad advice to the city attorney. I don't think it should be more than eight years because that says you could start a third term before this comes into effect, before the term limits come into effect. But I also think there should be something that more specifically allows someone to run again after the break. Because the way I read this is the break just describes what consecutive is, but it starts out, the start, first sentence says, no person shall qualify if that person has served eight years, is what I propose. But, and so right there, that would exclude you from ever running again if you had eight years.
I think it says consecutively, doesn't it?
Right. And then it describes consecutively, then it goes to great length to describe consecutive, what that means. But it doesn't ever say that, that once you take a break, that you can come back. And I think we ought to be explicit in what that break should be. Should it be four years? Should it be eight years? Ten years?
I, I think it's there. So the first sentence actually says, if you leave out the, the red more than, it would say, Bel Air City Council seat, if that person has served eight years consecutively as a duly elected member of the city council, or, well, it doesn't say exactly that, elected city mem, council member of the city of Bel Air. Then the second sentence is the term of office or each duly elected council member shall commence upon the num, upon that member being sworn into the council seat. Any break in service of less than four years shall be considered consecutive for the purpose of this ser, section. So a break more than four years is no longer consecutive, conversely.
Right, but you've already served, you already have been disqualified because you have served eight consecutive.
But if you, four years later, 12 years after your first day of seat in office?
Right, but it doesn't say that.
You're eligible. The second sentence?
It doesn't specifically say that. It just says what consecutive is.
Yes. It says that. It defines that as consecutive, which by inference, and correct me if I'm misstating this, Mr. Kelly, but by inference, that says, yes, you are qualified because you've had that four-year break.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dave, Mr. Smith?
I actually, as you explain it, I think I agree with Councilmember David in that the prohibition is against qualifying if you have served eight consecutive years. And so as, as stated, I think that if you ever hit that eight consecutive year mark, you would be prohibited from running in the future. If you served four years, took a br, a break of four years and then ran and then served another four years, you would never hit that definition of eight consecutive year term. You could add the word ever into the statement and say, no person shall qualified run as a candidate for the city of Bel Air council seat if that person has ever served eight years consecutively. And I think that's actually what, as written, read in the most prescriptive way could be read to mean. Because it does describe consecutive, but the definition of consecutive helps us understand if eight years consecutively was ever served.
The way I read it, or intended to write it for this council, based off the thorough discussion I had at workshop a few months ago, was that so long as you took four years off, you did not, we don't care if you, if you serve eight years. It's just two consecutive terms is really what we were trying to prohibit.
And so I think we're missing the element of when that consec, those consecutive times occurred in this statement. So if, if there was some dimension of time that was added to when the consecutive terms were served, I think you would accomplish that. So if it said the eight years consecutively prior to running or something like that, but as it's written, it does say if you've served eight years consecutively. Not consecutive to today's date or at the time of filing, but if those terms were ever served consecutively.
Well, the, okay, so the only prohibition I'm seeing that, and I want to understand it better, is that if it's after 2023 and you serve eight years, you, or more, I mean, you serve two duly elected terms. So again, no appointments count against this. You can't run again. That's what this says.
Correct.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think we're all agreeing on the intent. I think the wording is just the, the nuance of how it's structured and the way that it says, no person shall qualify if that person has served more than eight years consecutively or has served eight years consecutively. Then we go to find what consecutive means. That helps us understand if somebody is concerned, has served consecutively, but no part of that consecutively definition says that it was like consecutively prior to the term that they're applying for. Like there's no dimension of the, when those eight, eight years occurred to help us understand that if I take a four-year break, even though I did serve eight years consecutively, I am now qualified.
There's, there's no reset provision that once you've had a break, you start over, I think is what we're all headed at.
Let me.
I think the intent was that you had to step down for a while and then you could run again. For another, then hold another eight years.
I mean, that last, that last sentence attempts to tr, attempts to say that a person's term will not be considered to be consecutive at least four years, but break between the conclusion of and start of a newly elected term.
Are you wanting it to say more than eight years consecutively as a duly elected council member of the city of Bel Air unless they've had, unless that person has had?
Yes.
A four-year break? Because that's essentially, it's, we're saying that, but we're saying that through the structural language.
Very clear.
We don't want to say they can never run again. We just?
Right.
The way I understand this.
But generally legally, you start with a complete prohibition and then you add it in at the end with, you know, unless you fall in this group, you don't qualify. But I can, I can amend it to say unless the person has cert, has.
Well, I just drafted a sentence here to see if this works. After that first sentence, such member is qualified to run as a candidate after at least four-year break off the council. Just insert that sentence and keep everything else there because everything else is appropriate.
Well, that's what the last first sentence says.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
The way that I read the last sentence, I, I, the intent is clear to me that it intends to say that after four years, you're qualified to run again. But I think somebody could read it to mean that it's just a definition of what consecutive means.
Okay, so, okay.
Not also stating that it, because, you know, a four-year break in service resets the fact that you have previously served eight years.
Okay.
It just reads more of a definition of consecutive than a definition of resetting your eligibility.
Okay. So does everybody agree with how the mayor put the language?
I like that.
Can we read it again?
I agree with the sentiment. If you had improvements for that, it would concern me.
Read it again, please.
Okay. So I'm insert, just, I'm suggesting we insert the sentence after the first sentence that says such member is qualified to run as a candidate after at least a four-year break off the council.
Satisfactory to you, Jackie?
And the other two sentences define the consecutive four years. I'm not saying, I mean, I'm not inserting those words in there, just saying that's what they do.
Such person is qualified to run for council if that person has, I'm sorry, say that one more time so I can make sure I put it.
After at least a four-year break off the council.
Okay. And that break, the only issue with that is that break, you may serve an appointed term. That was part of the discussion, that that break may include serving in an appointed seat. So.
That was, that's clarified in the other two sentences, is it not?
So yeah, if.
Maybe that's in B, that's the B.
So I can add that as well. I think it'd be important to distinguish that break. Just clarifying that?
Yeah.
The person who served in an appointed seat.
Do we want to allow an appointed?
Sorry?
We can allow an appointed, non-four-year break then?
Um, yeah, a person, at that time, if, if during that break, council needs to fill a vacancy or have someone complete a term, last discussion, those, those terms do not count towards consecutive service. It's just duly elected terms. So.
Okay, that's.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Another question I had is when we say council seat, does our charter ordinance or does something else clarify what the definition of the council seat is and make a distinction between a council member seat and the council seat that the mayor sits in?
Yes.
And those are treated independently?
Yes.
Is that how I should read this?
Yes. Yeah, you have to file for a specific seat and the election office distinguishes between each seat. So, but if you'd like it to be more clear, if you have a suggestion, we can, would you like to, I, I don't think it would hurt to say a council member seat just for sake, the sake of clarity.
That, that might be useful if we're going to make other revisions.
I think we should say a council member singular seat, right?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. David?
So back to the more than, I think that should be struck because it allows a third term to start before?
Yeah.
The disqualification. Okay.
No, I think we still need that because that allows for somebody to be appointed and then run twice. So they could serve nine years if they were appointed.
Well, appointments are exempt from this calculator.
Okay.
So you, you can't run for, you can't, if you don't qualify for a full term.
You can run for office, not whether you can hold the office.
Correct.
Okay.
So you can't run for a full term. So whether it says more than or just eight years, it, it, it doesn't matter unless you, unless it has some value to this group.
The way I read the more than is that you could start a third term. You could, you could run a third term.
You can't run for a term you can't complete.
Right.
Okay, that's a lesson.
Right. Right. So, and then section B clarifies that appointment issue about if you're appointed. That doesn't kind of get your term limit.
Right, but you could still run. You would still be qualified to run and hold that seat for a third term. The last sentence just says you're not qualified, just says you can't run if you, if you don't qualify to complete the term. But this doesn't say anything about completing the term. Just says you can't have served more than eight.
Consecutive years.
Have served more than eight. Okay. All right. I'm with you again. Thanks.
I'll have a hard time imagining a scenario where that last sentence would ever come into play. I just can't, I just can't see how that ever come into play, but it's fine to say, I'm not playing it out.
So I can get elected twice, resign in the seventh year, and then I'm still qualified because I haven't served eight years.
You couldn't complete the term.
You wouldn't be qualified because you wouldn't be eligible to run for a, a third term because you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to complete a third term.
Uh, I don't see anything that says we can't serve the term. It just says we can't run for it.
Well, you could be appointed.
Be appointed, yeah.
It says I run as a candidate. I don't see anywhere that, that it says I can't be appointed if I've.
I think the intent was to allow you to be appointed. If you've served seven years and council is in need of people to finish terms and you apply for that, you would be eligible to be appointed. And the goal would be for you to be able to be.
Same rule would apply if I was running for election. If I was, if I resigned before the election, a year before the election, I could run again and, and I would not have completed eight years. So I would still be eligible.
But the election office wouldn't let you file because you're not, you would hit your eighth year before you could complete the term. So you would be considered ineligible.
Well, it doesn't say I can't serve more than eight years. It says, says I can't run.
The last sentence clarifies.
It doesn't say that you're not eligible to complete the term.
Yeah, it doesn't say that.
Don't qualify to run.
If you can't run, I don't know how else you could do a four-year term.
Well, that's what I just explained, though.
This specifically says, no person shall qualify to run for a council seat if that person cannot qualify to complete the entire term at the time of the election. So if you've served seven years and you try to run again, you could, you could not qualify to, to complete that term because you'd already have served seven years. You'd have to have your four-year.
Doesn't say you can't serve more.
There's nothing in here that says you can't serve more than eight years. It says you can't run again after you have served eight years.
And that was the goal. Like, we didn't want, from the initial workshop, the goal was to prevent people from running for multiple terms. It wasn't to prevent people from serving in an appointed capacity at all.
Yeah, but I'm still saying I could run again because I wouldn't have hit eight years. I would still be eligible to run because I hadn't hit eight years.
No, the election office is going to say, how many years have you served? And then based off of this part of the ordinance or the charter ordinance, they'll say, you've run, you've served seven years in Bel Air, but this statement says you are not qualified because the term is four years and you're only eligible to serve for one before you hit that.
Nowhere does it say I can't serve more than, it says.
Says you can't run.
It says you can't run, but it doesn't say I can't serve more than eight years.
Oh, well, in order to qual, and okay, so the way this is written is to, the catch-all for this process is filing an application to run as a duly qualified candidate. So if you can't, you know, make it through that gate, you cannot serve. So.
But it's, but it's seven years. I'm still a qualified candidate.
You're not a qualified candidate because this ordinance, the county will take it and they won't let you run for that third term.
Still seems to me like even after eight years, you're a qualified candidate. It has to be more than eight years before you're unqualified.
You, you won't be a qualified.
Questioning the difference here between a qualified candidate and year served.
Right.
Okay, so being this talks, this ordinance talks about a qualified candidate.
Right.
It doesn't talk about year served. He's saying he's a qualified candidate because he's on, he's only served seven years.
But he's, okay.
And, and the last sentence doesn't clarify that issue. I mean, it kind of does, but kind of doesn't.
Okay.
Clarify that issue that you can't serve more than eight years consecutively.
It would be the same as if I was appointed for three years and then ran and was in for four years. I still would have seven years consecutive service and I would still be eligible to run. So if I want to play the game, I can resign before the seventh year, before the eighth year starts. Then I only have seven years of service and I could run again for another four-year term.
Okay. And my understanding was in the workshop, we, we were not going to try to prevent that. But if, if you, this as written addresses people who would try to run for a third term. And if you, if you feel that there, if you want more language to, let me just ask you, how do you think that could be buttoned up? Because to me, from a, a legal perspective and reading other cities ordinances on this, we've got it. We can, we can keep adding to it and address other scenarios, but we've got it. But I'm happy to add language.
Well, it would change the intent, but we could talk about elections, that you couldn't be elected more than two consecutive terms.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
I was just going to say, I do think there are some important words in that very last sentence that says, no person shall qualify to run for that council seat if that person cannot qualify to complete an entire term. And I think that that is intended to address the, the qualification provision above and, and referring to the, you can't qualify if you would serve more than eight years.
Mr. Mayor?
I think you can fight this. If you really wanted to, you can, you can get around this ordinance.
Judge should go along with you on that.
He tried. He might have to. He might not want to.
Mr. Mayor, to Jackie's point, I think we could tidy it up by saying to run or serve, right? That's what we're debating here.
Well, we, again, serving the seat and a, a person who comes in through the process through appointment is also serving the seat. So I wouldn't want to use the word serve.
Then you could have the exception of Article B. It's, it's, Article B already is written as an exception.
You could clarify that by saying an appointed term does not count towards the term limit.
We say that in, in section B. Section B says term limits are set by section, shall not apply to council appointments. I think a solid way it is, but I don't know. I, go ahead, do what you want.
I still think the more than allows you a third term. Because if you only served two, it's only eight. That's not more than eight.
And I looked at some of the historical versions. We had more than, somebody wanted more than, and then we take it out and now it's back.
Right, we had in one and out of the other one.
The version. So it's, the more than is, is really a, a decision point for this group. The, the way the process works is the only way to get in this seat through election and serve a 12-year term is to be, is to qualify to run for that third term. And we've come up with a way to prevent people from qualifying to run for that third term. Now, they can get in that seat through appointments, but they, again, that would be confirmed by this body. So we've buttoned it up in a reasonably appropriate way. And, but I'm happy to take other input. Mr. Councilmember Welch, you would like another sentence in there right after no person shall qualify?
Do we have to specify eight years?
Eight years is what this group talked about.
Yeah, but can we instead say something like two full terms?
Right.
No, because the two full terms, again, we've had this conversation like three or four times. The two full terms was there in the beginning and it came out and went to eight. and it came out and went to eight years because we knew that this group could in- independently change what the duration of a term was. So the next group might say, a, a term is two years. So two terms would then be four years. And this group wanted that, the amount of time of service. The amount of, they thought that you, you all and others thought that, um, it was appropriate to have it bound at an eight-year time period.
Okay, I would think that anybody future that wants to change it to two-year terms would be smart enough to know they had to change this ordinance as well.
Yeah, we, we started there, but it was.
Counsel like we have now.
Right.
We can say the greater of two full terms are eight years.
If you, we can do that.
Mr. Mayor.
If you want to do that.
Mr. Dean.
Looking at the survey, I just kind of wanna, I wasn't a part of any of these workshops, so I'm trying to help mediate a little bit. I'm looking at the, the poll that was taken. I remember voting in this poll. Um, and the question three was, should the number of consecutive terms for the City Council of Bel Air be limited to two four-year terms? Is there, I'm just trying to look at what the intent of the survey results were, probably what you guys discussed and see if that helps. Button it up. Does that sentence help in this discussion at all? Question three read, should the number of consecutive terms for the City Council of Bel Air be limited to two four-year terms? It was an overwhelming yes. So I don't know, is that language appropriate in here? Instead of eight years, using two full-year terms and defining the terms and their length? Would that help?
I think that we can change it. It, it just, I mean, I think this hasn't been passed. This group gets to pass it. So at the time, the previous group was, had talked about how eight years was about enough time to have a good impact. They're full terms. We know how much time we have. If this group likes it better to be more general and just say two terms, and we can do that. So two four-year terms at the time was just a more clear way of saying, um, saying that to the public.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
When we first talked about this, we talked about dozens of edge cases probably and different ways that this could fall. And ultimately, I think we wanted it to be really clear for the election office as to what were the qualifications for somebody to get on the ballot. And that's why a lot of this extra language is necessary so that there's a lot of clarity uh, for them to know who can be on the ballot. And so I understand why it has to be more complicated than the cer, the survey question. I also think that because there are so many edge cases, we could wordsmith this until the end of time and we still may not catch them all. And so I personally really like the suggestion that the mayor made about the additional statement being added in there, and I kind of think we ought to leave it at that. And remove the more than.
Remove the more than, okay.
So is that a motion?
Well, I guess the, the question for the city attorney, would it be better to allow you to go revise these and bring us back the updated copy?
Sure, yes. I would love for this group to be able to see what, what that additional changes. And by the way, when we, um, initially put this together, we did send it to the election office and they said that that works for how they review candidates to qualify. Um, I think the change you have now won't, won't cause any issues. Um, if you want to make other changes, because I know we don't have a motion on the table. If you want to talk about terms, they may come back and ask us to define more, um, during that next two-week period. So if you're not ready to, um, if you want to hear back from the election office, I would recommend tabling it rather than passing it and getting the ball rolling.
Yeah. The issue is we're running against a timetable that's gonna bite us if we're not careful, or potentially bite us. I mean, I don't know that well. Depends on whether there's, there's a protest petition out there. Okay? That's, that's the only concern I've got. I think you could table it till next week, but beyond that, you couldn't table this anymore without running a risk of having to hold a special election if somebody filed a protest petition.
Right. Right. If your goal is preventing someone from running, um, a third term, knowing that the terms are currently four years, we've got it. With, with the mayor's language. If, if your goal is to kind of be able to be more broad and maybe not define terms so that way it can last longer and it doesn't have to be changed, you know, when terms change, we want to get more specific and we probably want to take some time to change that. So that's.
Do you think the, the two four-year terms is less specific? You think that's not legal language enough?
The, the two four-year terms. Well, again, like Councilmember Welch said, that if another section of the code changed, this would have to change. Um, so if you like two four-year terms, we, we can put that in there.
I think that's very explicit.
Okay. Is that a consensus for two four-year terms?
Instead of eight years?
Instead of eight years and then the mayor's, um, the mayor's language on such members qualified to run for council after at least a year break from break off of the council?
It's a four-year.
Four-year break off of the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Personally, I like the eight years consecutively.
Yeah. And I, to me, it's, it's, it's either, either one's fine. They both say the same thing. Today. Tomorrow's will be much different. So do you want to, do we want Ms. Kelly to go and make that revision and move on to some of these other items in the meantime? Or are we gonna have, we may have questions for her on these other items as well? I guess we can suspend the, the meeting and move on to the workshop while she goes and works.
I think you better go through the other two before you do that, before we suspend.
All right, well, let's move on to item B.
For matter of record, does that mean the motion failed? Because we had a motion on the table.
We didn't have a motion. We did not have a motion on the table.
I believe we did. I thought you said that was a motion.
No, I asked him.
No second, but I believe there was a motion.
I asked him if it was a motion. He did not commit that it was.
Said that it was.
Okay, I misunderstood then. I thought you did.
Okay, so item B is the duration of term for the mayor, which is, okay, that's the one that says on section two A, term limits for mayor. Well, it's identical. That language is almost the same as was in the, in the, uh, council member term limits.
You're not talking about this one? Ordinance twenty-two, the mayor term, or you're talking about term limits for the mayor?
Term limits for the mayor is what's, is item on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Uh, so that language is nearly identical. I'm not sure why we wouldn't make the same proposed change that we made for the council member term limits, the statement that you added.
I think that's appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, clarification on that. We're, we're on item C then for term limits of mayor.
We're on item B, which is term limits for the mayor.
Item B is duration of term for the mayor.
I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. But let's move, talk about item C then. We're a little bit out of order, but.
Right. It does, they do match.
Yeah.
So on that, did we say qualify to run and serve? Or are we still just running? Just qualifications to run?
I think the intent is for both of the council member and the mayor to have the same limitations on when, how many times they can run for election. So should basically be the same language.
Right. Did we insert that run or serve? Do we insert the or serve in that language or not? That's my real question.
Well, I think the suggestion was we insert the same sentence we're inserting to the city council member.
Right.
Term limit into this, into this paragraph. And basically, they end up saying the same thing, one applying to council members, one applying to the mayor.
And I would recommend not being or serve in that part.
Okay.
So if you had, again, these are qualifications to run.
Okay. Thank you.
So are we all right with that? It's consensus, basically. Because she's gonna go change them, then we'll vote on them after she changes them. All right, then, uh, back to item B. We'll be on the same page this, this time. Okay? This is the only one left. Okay, so this is duration of term for the mayor. Because currently, the mayor's term is two years.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I think it makes sense to address this issue on our agenda before the other one because if this should not pass, it may change. It, I don't know if we would still say eight years, uh, for the term limit or not. I think it's gonna pass and I think it'd probably still be eight years, but that's probably why they're in that order.
Well, it could still be eight years. It'd just be four terms instead of two.
Right.
Yeah, a reason for specifying eight in this case instead of terms. Which is probably how we got to it for council members.
So have we, are we okay with the language in that draft ordinance? Okay. Very good. Uh, let's suspend the city council meeting and give Ms. Jackie.
You want to go ahead and vote on item B?
Well, I guess we could, yes, if we want to do that, if you'd like. So I need a motion.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Can I ask, um, as of now, the way that charter ordinances work, they get a number. Um, they're numbered based on how you, um, the order in which you vote on them. And we've kind of have some other files that have them numbered already. I, next time I won't put numbers on them. I'll give them some other sort of identifier. But it would be helpful if you voted on them in the way that they're presented.
In order that they're presented. So we really need to, to suspend the meeting until you have a chance to update these drafts. And then we'll, we'll come back to.
The one for the mayor's term has already got a number on it, twenty-two, which I assumed that was the only one we knew for sure the number would be.
We know, we knew all the numbers, um, but.
Others twenty-three and twenty-four?
Uh, twenty-one and twenty.
So it would get them out of order. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
If, uh, I guess I want to make sure, uh, that our city attorney was planning to stay for the workshop. If we were planning to pick this back up after the workshop, I wouldn't want her to stay for the whole workshop if she weren't originally planning to.
Um, I was planning on leaving after the budget piece, but I can, I'm here at your pleasure, so I can go and get this typed up and then whenever you're ready to address it, I'll have it ready for you.
Let's plan it this way then. Let's suspend the city council meeting, start the workshop, go through the budget piece. Are you wanting to be present for the budget piece?
Um, I can come in and out. I, I'll probably work on it here and then go print it, if that's okay.
Okay, all right. Uh, and then if she's ready, after we do the budget piece, we'll come back to the city council meeting. And I know that's gonna really make our video guy go crazy, but, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to recess the city council meeting until after the budget portion of the city council workshop.
Second.
I have a motion to recess the city council meeting, uh, by Mr. Smith and second by Ms. Amber. Any discussion? Here and then, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries five, zero. Meeting is recessed until we see other things. So.